Copy I had was Suzanne. Draft on it.
Probably.
Yeah. All right.
How are you doing?
Well.
So that's, that's me.
Last week, I just had this forest. Whenever I was meeting once, I just had this like terrible sinus feeling. I was going to sleep and then I later saw Suzanne was like, you can please get down for just a little bit. And I was like, I was just turning back. But now she, she is. What's going on? She's, she's not going to be here.
Was she not going to be here?
No. That she was feeling unwell, so.
Oh, wow.
Some of the stuff for us. I think we do. It's, that is.
You ready, you ready, Aaron?
Yeah, is, is Fatima on?
Uh, she is not, but we have Rob and Jana on through Zoom.
It was, it'd been my understanding from Suzanne that shh, Fatima would not be on. So I, I'll just assume that's going to be cracked and we'll.
This one, I just hit the record button.
And then I would drag this over there so everyone can.
Do like this.
Yeah, you can go ahead and hit record first if you want.
Okay, I'm going to put the screen up there. This, the agenda that's up there is our joint meeting. The agenda for tonight's meeting, the regular board meeting, just has the one item on it.
Yeah, I have it.
They have. Where's the stuff?
Okay, up there, the gray spot to the right. The maximize button.
Okay. Hey, look at me, I'm driving the bus. You, where's my thing? Where's my recorded thing?
Click on more.
We ready?
Yes.
I don't want to record to the cloud, I want to record to this computer.
I'm still sorting, sorting it out.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Still not giving me all those options. Okay, hold on. This is fun.
Are we good?
Uh, hold on.
Okay.
Uh, wait a minute. Did it not record to the cloud? What happened to the recorder this computer?
I don't know.
Do you know how to get it off the cloud? Why is it not doing that?
Well, we have it on YouTube, so we're okay. We'll have a recording now. So go ahead and.
Right click on record. I don't know if we're recording it up.
But yeah, if you want to select record cloud, we're at least going to try it. We'll be able to find it somehow.
This meeting is being recorded.
Here's issue or our next episode of Lost. You should be good to go.
Hey, um, well, this is Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. We are at 6:15 PM, we're now 6:18. Um, ready to begin the, uh, what I have listed here as a St. Helens Public Library Special Board Meeting. Um, so we will, uh, call ourselves to order. Um, I believe we have a quorum, we have myself, Aaron Martin, uh, Vice Chair. We have Erin Lynn, Jay, Rob, and Jana present. So I believe we have a quorum and we're ready to proceed. Um, our only item on our agenda is the new business is prospective board member interviews. It's my understanding, one of those prospective interviewees could not be here. And so I believe we have, uh, Kelsey Knitson, if I'm, uh, pronouncing that correctly. Um, if you are ready to go, we have some, some questions for you, not, hopefully not too intense or at all. I'll just assure, assure you that it will not be, uh, too intense. Um, are you ready?
Yes, ready to go.
All right, um, you want to just, uh, kind of go down wide? Rob and Jana, I don't know if you have the, uh, the old interviewer questions. Uh, if not, we'll just go down the line here. I'll just start, uh, with Jay.
How are you doing, Kelsey?
Hi, good.
Good. Uh, why do you want to serve on the St. Helens Public Library Board?
Yeah, um, the St. Helens Library has been my home library since I had my daughter, uh, who's now seven years old. I started out going to the youth, um, baby lapsit reading program with her. And we live in Warren, so I'm halfway between Skiphus and St. Helens. I had a choice and St. Helens was my favorite library. Um, and so we've been going for the past seven years. I, I don't think between my kids and I, we've checked out over 250 books in the past seven years. And I'm an avid reader. I love libraries and I love supporting literacy. Um, I'm actually the new, uh, library specialist at the Skiphus School District for, um, the Otto Peterson School. And so I'm imbuing myself in all the libraries all around. And it's just something I'm super passionate about, um, and making sure that our libraries are strong and that they stick around and that we have great programs to get people reading and into the building. And, uh, I love just being able to make connections and kind of get my voice heard and have a say and, um, make sure that, you know, things keep going in a positive direction.
Um, Kelsey, I, I will, I will go next. This, uh, you might have already covered some of what, uh, this, this question gets at, but the next question is describe your current involvement in the library.
Yeah, so, uh, St. Helens Library, um, we've been going to the kids' library programs, uh, with Jana now for the past year. Absolutely adore her and the program she's put on. Um, we all, my two kids and myself all participated in the summer reading program and had lots of fun keeping track of all the minutes reading and filling out, you know, reviews and everything. Um, I, we've participated in the summer reading program for the past, I don't know, five years or so. And, um, then we're just regular visitors of the library. I have aspirations to do more for my adult self, not just the kids' stuff. But scheduling just hasn't worked out for that yet. But I'm really excited to start participating this next month in the book club and, um, some of the other awesome programs that they have put together.
Hi, Kelsey, my name is Lynn Pettit. And I'm going to ask you, uh, what do you see as a role of the library in our community?
Role of the library in the community? Um, it's a place of gathering, a place of community, of learning. Um, it's a place that I use to host my tutoring business, um, that I tutor local kids and I use the hallway of the library. Um, we go in and check out books to help, uh, kids learn how to read. And I think in general, that is kind of the purpose of the library is to just be a place that people can meet. That's a safe space, a place that you can meet and you don't have to spend money. Um, you don't have to buy a coffee drink to sit there. You don't have to buy food. You don't have to buy a book. You can just sit, look at a book, read, do a puzzle, um, use the Maker Space, all of those amazing resources that even I know a lot of people in the community don't realize that they're there. And so I think being able to share those awesome features of the library and the space and the community that it offers, um, is really important.
Thank you. Hi, Kelsey, I'm Erin Wieldon. I'm a, a new member on the board. Um, what is your vision for library services offered by the library?
I think vision wise is just getting the word out there of, you know, getting people in and realizing the library of things, all of the amazing things that you can check out. Bike repair kits and, you know, air fryers and the STEM stuff, the robots and all of that stuff. So much of that stuff is not, it's just books, you know? And even services like Libby, um, I read most of my books digitally because I always have my phone with me, but I don't always remember to bring a book with me. And I can read magazines on there. You don't even have to be a book reader, you can read magazines. There's passes. I have used, um, the Maritime Museum pass. I have used the state park parking passes before. There's so many things besides just books that the library offers. And I think making sure that the community knows all of those things and the ways that they can participate in the library, uh, is super important.
Thank you.
Hey, I think you already answered this one, Kelsey, but we'll give it a whirl. Describe a time when you were affected by a library and why.
Oh goodness, I have been a library kid since I was, I don't know how old. I, you know, have very vivid memories of my childhood library back in San Diego and, you know, being there for the summer reading program and signing up and being so excited that I got to win prizes. And, um, just the, the thrill of finding a new book and not having to stick with the books that are on my shelf at home, but the stories that you can find. Um, I think I have very special memories too of both of my kids as little kids being in storytime with, uh, Ms. Gretchen from five, six years ago and Jana for both my kids of, you know, sitting and singing songs with my kids in the library and reading fun books and letting, letting my kids laugh about a book because Jana uses a funny voice or a puppet. Um, I think all three of those of my own childhood, plus my two kids' childhoods, um, I think are all centered around the library.
Right. Uh, Aaron Martin again here. Um, the St. Helens Public Library is guided by the principle Freedom to Read as set out by the American Library Association. Um, what do you know about this and how do you see it applied at our library?
Yeah, I'm actually, because of just getting hired on at the library at Otto Peterson, I have been read into the, um, freedom to read. And I couldn't agree more that everybody gets a chance to read the books that they want to read and that everybody has a right to learn the information that they're wanting to learn or read the stories, um, to be able to see people like themselves in a book. And that it's really important that people can make those choices for themselves.
Kelsey, uh, next question is what skills do you possess that make you uniquely qualified to serve on the library board?
Yeah, um, I'm super organized. I am very personable. I, um, have great connections with our community and, um, events. And I'm an event planner, uh, business wise. And so, you know, large scale concepts of events and planning and details, all of that is really in my wheelhouse. And then just my passion for, you know, what we do and what the library board represents.
Thanks, Kelsey. Have you ever served on an advisory board before? And if so, what was your role and what did you like about it?
Uh, I have not. This will be my first. This would be my first.
A great place to start.
Yeah.
Rob might want to ask a question.
Oh, Rob, do you happen to have?
I, I don't, but I know that there's one. Um, the library board meets the second Monday of every month, 7:15 PM. Would this be something that would work for you?
Yep, absolutely. I've already been attended, tried to attend two of them.
That was, that was the question.
That's the one, okay. That is it, Kelsey, as promised, or I hope you perceived it to not be too, uh, in your face, those questions. So, um, with that, our other, uh, applicant or interviewee is not available, I understand. I don't see, uh, that person in the participants list. So, um, I would give it up to any board member to, uh, have a motion, uh, in front of the board so we can address the, these two applicants. Anyone?
My, my motion.
Yeah, you gotta get more detail there, Rob.
Okay, I motion to, um, move forward with discussing the applicant.
Oh, no, I, uh, I guess I was suggesting, um, uh, forwarding one, uh, one or the other to the city council for, um, approval.
I'm glad you can translate what I meant to say.
There you go.
Forward the applicant to the city council for the.
This, this applicant though, there's two.
Yes. Kelsey.
Got it, understood. So, uh, we have a motion to, um, uh, forward, uh, Ms. Knitson's name to the city council. Um, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, um, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, so we are unanimous. Um, so we're going to forward your name, Kelsey, to, uh, the city council. It'll be, uh, just after this and we'll ask them to approve you. And then after that, um, Ms. Bishop, the, the library director will be in, in contact with you, um, assuming they of course follow our, our sage advice and do appoint you. Um, do you have any questions for us?
I do not. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. Um, and that is the only item on our agenda unless there's any, um, any suggestions for, uh, putting any items on our agenda for our next meeting. Um, but if not, then we would be open for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
All right.
I second that.
So we have, I should have got a second but last thing. But all right, uh, assuming there's no discussion on that, all in favor of adjourning? So aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Good night.
The recording has stopped.
Okay, you're going to come here and have draft. So, so I can.
...
Okay, there you go.
All right, we are just waiting for some more board members to arrive so we have a quorum. We will go back on mute and update you in a bit. Good evening. We don't have a quorum of city council members or board members so this meeting is going to be delayed until later time. Thank you to anyone who's watching.